Good evening and welcome to the Richmond Public Schools School Board Work Budget Session. I now call this meeting to order on Tuesday, February ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. Madam Chair.
Thank you. This meeting is being held as an electronic meeting pursuant to and in compliance with Richmond City's Council Ordinance Number two thousand and twenty dash zero nine three, adopted April ninth, two thousand and twenty, and extended by Ordinance Number two thousand and twenty dash one eight three, adopted August twentieth, two thousand and twenty, and by Ordinance Number two thousand and twenty dash two three two, adopted December the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, and the school board's resolution approved on April twentieth, two thousand and twenty. Simultaneous translation is being provided tonight in Spanish via Zoom, and the meeting notice contained information on how individuals needing translation services could obtain the service. The meeting notice also stated that the meeting would be a virtual meeting and would be live streamed for the public on the school division's Facebook page, and the link was provided. The agenda of the meeting was posted on board docs. After the roll call, we will state how many board members are present and participating in the roll call. Elizabeth Door?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Present.
Ms. Gibson?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Present.
Ms. Rizzi?
Here.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Present.
Mrs. Burke?
Here.
Mrs. Page? And Mrs. Jones?
Yeah.
Madam Chair, you have eight, and you're present, and you have a call.
Thank you so very much, Madam Clerk Collins. We'll now move forward with the budgetary items, number two point zero one. The first item is school reopening discussion. Superintendent Camus.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, board members. I wanted to just have a brief initial conversation with all of you tonight regarding the governor's announcement on Friday in which he laid out an expectation that all school divisions in the Commonwealth provide in-person instruction beginning on March fifteenth. I have uploaded the governor's letter to board docs for the board and the public to review. As you can see from the letter, it appears that this is, quote, "an expectation as distinct from an official executive order or mandate", which appears to grant school divisions latitude in terms of how we respond. I did want to share, I have a number of concerns about us coming back in person on March fifteenth, and just wanted to highlight a few of those and then hear from the board to see where folks are so that we can then provide a formal recommendation and response. Chief of mine, my concerns is that, as a division, we went to great lengths to listen to our families and our staff in December to make a decision about the second semester. We had thousands of staff members and families respond from all sections of the city and all of our schools, and the overwhelming sentiment of both families and staff was to remain virtual, and that was a key driver in our decision. Second, on the facilities front, as we have discussed, many, if not all of our buildings, have air quality concerns. As the board knows, we have been discussing bipolar ionization as a potential method of addressing those air quality concerns. We have not yet finalized that decision and, as such, have not begun any of that work. Our best estimates is that it will take several months to do so, which would take us well into the summer. Also, on the facilities front, we are in the midst of completing the bathroom work that we started some time ago. In fact, if you were to visit some of our schools, you might see that sinks, in some cases, are not attached to the wall because they're being replaced, or stalls have been taken down because they're being replaced, and so again, that work is ongoing, as we had the expectation that we would not be returning until late summer or the fall. Switching from facilities to transportation, as you all know, we deliver meals every morning using our bus fleet, and so if we were to have in-person instruction, we would either have to sacrifice some of that distribution of meals or forego transportation for our students, which understandably would create a hardship for many families in terms of getting their children to school. And then turning to academics, I do think one of the most significant benefits that we've been able to offer families, students, and teachers is the stability that has come with fostering the teacher-student relationship since we opened up in September. Though it has been very difficult, our teachers have worked extremely hard, and our families have worked extremely hard to make this work, and though it by no measure has been perfect, there has been the development of strong connections and relationships, even in the virtual environment between our teachers and our students and their families. If we were to bring students back, even on a voluntary basis, teachers back on a voluntary basis, we would necessarily have to disrupt many of those bonds, as we discussed in December. For example, if you had a third-grade teacher with twenty-five students, and she decided to come back, and five of her students decided to come back as well, that would be ideal for those five students, but for the other twenty, they would need to be reallocated to a virtual teacher, likely causing very high caseloads for virtual teachers, and then again, causing those students and those families to need to create new relationships, new bonds, as we get into the latter part of the school year, which could have a negative impact on academics and social-emotional development of our students. And then finally, from a health and safety perspective, I'm heartened that the vaccine is now becoming available, but as of right now, approximately thirty percent of our staff, just thirty percent, have received their first dose. That is, by and large, our front-facing staff, our transportation team, our nutrition team, some of our front-office folks who are working in buildings. The percentage of teachers is very low, and the overall percentage of employees who have received their second dose is extremely low. This is no fault of the Virginia Department of Health or the Richmond City Health District. It's merely a function of the low supply of vaccine coming from the federal government. I'm hopeful that that will change over the next several months, but the reality is, there is very little likelihood that we would be anywhere near one hundred percent vaccinated by March fifteenth, frankly, let alone by the end of this academic year. For all those reasons and others, I have significant concerns about us coming back in person on March fifteenth, or frankly, at any point this academic year. At the same time, I do want to recognize and acknowledge there are many of our young people are struggling, and many of our families are struggling with the virtual environment, and our most vulnerable students, many of them are struggling the most. And so I also have asked the team to think about, potentially for a subset, for example, of our special education students, is there a way to bring some of them back or make that option available on a voluntary basis for those with the most acute needs to provide a better experience for them and to show some good faith in response to the governor's request. That being said, I do think any such measure at this time would likely have to be fairly limited, but I do want you to know that we have begun thinking about and exploring that so that we could bring to you as many options as possible. With that, I'll pause. Again, really wanted to hear from the board where folks are on this. Last note I'll just share is, I have spoken with all of our principals earlier today, with our reopening committee earlier today to get their feedback, and I would say, by and large, their feedback is consistent with what I have just shared, a significant reticence about coming back March fifteenth or at any point this current academic year. I also will just wrap by saying one of the things that I am hopeful about is our discussions of an extended year going into next year, and I think if we do stay the course with a virtual school year for this academic year, I think part of the conversation has to be about our response next year. I think we're all one hundred percent aligned on the desire to do everything we possibly can to support our young people in response to COVID. I think the extended-year options we've been discussing could be a very critical piece of that response, and if we do remain virtual for the rest of the year, I would hope that we could continue to press forward on the extended-year options, invest in those so that we can provide the additional instructional and social-emotional support for our young people going into next year and beyond, because I think this response is going to have to be a multi-year response. With that, I'll pause and open it up, Madam Chair, to you and the rest of the board for feedback.
Give me, I'm sorry. Mr. Young, whom do we have?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Gibson first.
Proceed. Who's after Ms. Gibson, so I can go down the list? Anybody else?
Yes, ma'am, to be followed by, there's a long list.
Okay.
All right. By Ms. White, then Ms. Door, then Ms. Page.
All right, Ms. Gibson, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I think that I have been quite outspoken regarding my perspective on this matter, regarding the decision to remain virtual at the start of the year, and I shared a public statement with my perspective on the governor's request or expectation that we reopen on March fifteenth, and and I, you know, I feel very strongly that this is just very bad timing, given we are on the cusp of being at a place where, hopefully, it will be safe to be back at school soon, but we are simply not there yet. In the very same statement, the governor also shared that this is a time when we cannot, you know, we cannot loosen up, we can't slack, so to suggest that we were at a place where it was appropriate to push for in-person school statewide, to me, just does not make sense. But I also want to say that while I am, I feel very strongly that it is time, that now is not the time to return to school. I want to proceed as a district as if it were. And so my request is that we put together a dashboard, this is something that I requested before, that is shared at every single meeting, and I believe, you know, we've done a very good job in staying in communication with parents, I think that this should be communicated in those weekly emails with updates on where we are as a district to be able to prepare to go back to school. You know, what, where are we in terms of having those building updates complete? Where are we in terms of staffing? Where, you know, what do the stats show? How many of our faculty and staff have been vaccinated? You know, what is the timing for that? These are critical details, and I don't feel comfortable staying, you know, just kind of staying comfortable in the fact that, yes, we've made a commitment that we're going to stay virtual till the end of the year. We need to show that we are making progress to getting back to school, and I think it behooves us to be able to show the public where we are as we proceed, starting today.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. I hope Ms. Collins received your list. Would you be so kind just to list your, the information that you suggested for the dashboard? Do you put that in the chat for us? You don't have to go into great detail so that we can make sure that we have that. Thank you. Ms. White?
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Camus, I have two questions. Has a plan been created or started, written, planned on paper to returning back to school? And my second question would be, what percentage of the work has been started? And have the logistics aspects that is needed for to return to school, have they been ordered? Like the plexiglasses? And include like the other logistics that would be needed, the hand-sanitized stands, testing, tracing, these things that are pertinent to returning back to school? What percentage of the work, and I know you said ventilation, how many schools have been fixed with the proper ventilations that will be needed? And can you give us an estimated time, since you're saying this year is not a good year, which is correct, because none of these things haven't been completed? But when do you think a timeframe that at least seventy-five percent of this will be done?
Thank you, Ms. White. And Mr. Camus, do you want us to continue or to? And you answer at the end, or shall we continue with the questions?
I can briefly respond if you would like.
Please, Ms. Gibson's and Mrs. White's, as you well know, are similar. Good data.
Sure. Yes, absolutely. We can work on putting together a dashboard of sorts to share progress on all of these items. Mrs. White, to your question about, you know, where are we on things like the PPE and such, we have a significant amount of PPE sanitizer, all that sort of thing, which we initially ordered last summer in advance of the fall, thinking that we might come back. But when it comes to things like the air quality enhancements, to be frank, we have not done any of those. Part of the reason, or the entire reason, is because, again, we are still, as a body, discussing which of those enhancements to do and how to do them. I'm hopeful that at some point over the next week or so, we will have some resolution on that so we can begin to take steps on that. Also, I do want to note, a lot of those things we expect to fund with the federal stimulus, and I do want to make sure the public hears this, while we're incredibly grateful for those funds, we do not have those funds today. There is a process by which we would need to first approve a spend plan from this body, and then submit that plan to the state, have that approved, then have those funds dispersed, and then engage in a procurement process to utilize those funds for a lot of those facility enhancements. That's one of the reasons that I do have significant concerns about March fifteenth, to be to be direct, it is literally not possible to do the air quality enhancements that we would like to do by March fifteenth. It is going to be hard to get them all done by the summer, given how much work has to be done, so do want to be very, very clear, very direct about that, and happy to continually provide updates to the board on that work and everything else that we're doing to prepare once the board has approved a spend plan.
Thank you, Superintendent Camus. Ms. Door?
Thank you. I like Ms. Gibson's idea of the dashboard, and I agree with the items that she listed. I would add custodial staff to the list, and I can put this in the chat, and temperature scanner, the temperature scanners as well. And then I have two questions. One is on the temperature scanners specifically. I heard that we have been installing them, but that perhaps some of the installations and the testing around the temperature scanners are not installed in a way that accurately captures temperatures, people come in and out of the building, so just wondering if, are we still testing them? Kind of, I think it gets back to sort of getting the data around where we are so that we can kind of know that we're taking steps to prepare for that. And then, secondly, I know from friends that I have in the counties that the hybrid option did create a situation in which a good friend of mine had a teacher change in the middle of the year. That was very disruptive to her family. And I was wondering, I didn't know exactly how Chesterfield did it, if teachers could opt out or opt in, or if it was by a pre-existing condition, et cetera. But I think it's something that families haven't considered as a potential unintended consequence of reopening, and I'd just love if you could speak to that a little bit more.
Thank you, Ms. Door.
On the temperature scanner, I don't have the specifics offhand, but we can gather that for you. My understanding is, it looks like Ms. Udesko might be able to share a little bit more on that front.
Thank you, Ms. Udesko.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, Ms. Door, we had heard this, I think, actually, you had raised it a couple of meetings ago, and so Bobby Hathaway, our director of facilities, who's actually on the panel this evening, to be able to talk about some of the air quality work when we get to that. He and the custodian teams did go and double-check the installation of all the temperature checkers, so we're confident about those. I will name, however, that because the temperature checkers are placed near a door so that your temperature is taken before you enter the building, they are coming in a little low. And I think that is a weather consideration. So that is something that we're can, we're right now, and we're not fully open, tracking to see if the one hundred point four degree threshold, which is the current CDC threshold for COVID, if that would need to be modified based, not that the CDC thing would be modified, but if the way that this is taking temperature because of door placement, either we would want to move further into the buildings, but there may be unintended consequences with that, or just have nurses have a lower initial threshold, and then work privately with folks who may be experiencing, I'm making this up, a ninety-nine point eight degree temperature instead of one hundred point four. So we're working through that right now so that we would, of course, be ready. The second piece that we're doing in regards to the temperature checkers now is, with the initial care's money, we made sure that all buildings had at least one temperature checker. Now, we are proposing to increase that to ensure that there is a temperature checker at each doorway that is used for student entry. So our health team is working now with each principal to see which schools would up their number, and will ensure that those are in place. So I'm feeling good about the direction of that piece right now.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Udesko. Ms. Page?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have various similar questions that my board members have shared, but I want to be a little bit more specific in my questions. Thank you for this information, because ultimately, we have to open safely. So my questions are, and we have to be intentional about our opening, but my questions are, transportation, bus drivers, so in regards to the social distancing, do we have enough buses, bus drivers, to accommodate being socially distanced? And how would this impact our meal distribution? Because this is going to take away. So, you know, how is that all going to be planned out? Also, do we have adequate PPEs for our students as well as staff? Ventilation for our aged old facilities as well as all of our facilities? And, you know, the quantity of the cleaning, washing stations, the vaccination of staff, students? And what are the consequences if some students decide to opt out? Because that's a possibility as well. And a timeline? Is it, you know, we need a timeline? Resources, have them in, you know, the resource allocation to all of our schools, and as Superintendent Cameron said, a spin, of a spin plan? But I think this process really needs to be intentional, because as you know, the resources are attached to funding. And we have to have, we have to ensure that we have all the resources that we need in order to have, to open safely, and we need to make sure that the funding is there to support the resources that are needed. So I agree with a dashboard, a timeline, to be able to update the board as well as the public for all of our schools, not just some of our schools, but all of our schools, to make sure that we have the adequate resources in place, to ensure that we open safely. Thank you. And I know that was a long list.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Mr. Young, anyone else?
Yes, ma'am, Dr. Harris Mohammed, yours truly, and then, Madam Chair, you will be next.
Thank you. Dr. Harris Mohammed, the floor is yours. Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Camus, what are your, what are our reopening plans for summer learning? That's question number one. Hint, question number two, can you fully explain and identify with guiding examples why custodians were removed under the umbrella of facilities and under the direction of principals? Question number three, when will we prepare the needed, when will we prepare the plan needed to receive the additional funds? And then the last question that I have, we're talking about temperature monitors, do we have palm scanners in any of our schools or central office or off-site facilities that are under the direction of RPS? And if not, can we add that to our list? Thank you. Mr. Camus?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dr. Harris Mohammed. I'll perhaps go in reverse order. To my knowledge, we don't have palm scanners, but we do have the walkthrough temperature scanners, which have been highly regarded, as I understand it, based on CDC guidelines. I would ask Ms. Udesko to weigh in on that, as she has helped with our Health and Safety Task Force.
Thank you. I did want to note that it basically is a palm scanner, so while it's a walkthrough, it has two different places to take your temperature for palm or wrist, so you put it up to the scanner or forehead. So the walkthrough is more of a structure that ensures the palm scanner, so yeah, I would say that while it's not like a handheld palm scanner, that is what it is scanning, that or your wrist or your forehead.
Thank you for that clarification. On the spend plan, what we will discuss in the second part of the agendas tonight, that is our proposed spend plan for the stimulus funding. On the custodians, some time ago, we made the decision to move management of custodians under principals as we were hearing some miscommunication and lack of oversight some time ago, when you had more of a central management structure, and so we wanted to empower our school leaders to have that direct management authority. That being said, we've seen over the last year or so that with new leadership in our custodial office, we may now be in a position to bring those back under central management, and that's something that we are exploring for next year. And then, your first question, pardon me.
Summer, what's the summer plan?
Oh, summer plan. Really, Dr. Harris Mohammed, that is contingent upon our decisions about our calendar for next year. So, for example, if we were to have a year-round schedule that involves an early start, say, in early or mid-August for some or all students, that affects what we would do as summer programming in July. If, on the other hand, we have a post-Labor Day start, then our summer program would look very different. So our hope is to soon reach some consensus around our thinking for next year so that we can then make the appropriate plans.
Thank you, Mr. Camres. Ms. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to begin by acknowledging and affirming a lot of the same concerns that my colleagues have shared along with the superintendent pertinent to reopening. And I'm in no way naive as it relates to what a heavy lift it will be for us to reopen the doors, even in a limited way, this, this spring. But I do want to, I do want to point out that if Chicago and the city of New York can do it, then I know, I know we can do it here in Richmond Public Schools. And to be clear, both, both those school districts have, have confirmed that they are going to proceed accordingly. I, I do, I appreciate the superintendent's remarks and recommendations at the, at the top of the hour, specifically in the context of identifying options, right? I regret if, would regret if this conversation becomes an either/or. I acknowledge that a majority, a supermajority of our teachers and, and our families prefer to stay virtual, and I think it's imperative that we recognize that and, and we, we support them and they're right there, too. But I also, this evening, want to speak up for all of those families, all those, those students who have communicated to us that, that they're experiencing, they're experiencing real harm right now. And, and the harm pertains to, the harm pertains to isolation. The harm pertains to being away from, from their peers and from their teachers. The harm, the harm relates to, for, in particular, our families with K-2 learners who don't have a parent to stay at the house, and often it's an older sibling trying to encourage that, that child to, the younger, the younger child to get on a computer and participate. I would be disappointed if we didn't, if we didn't, while acknowledging the, the real harm and real threat and all the thousands of persons, our friends and neighbors that have been lost in the Commonwealth and across the country because of COVID, I would be disappointed in, arguably, in same regard, if we didn't acknowledge all of those persons that are being identified because they have said something or written something pertinent to self-harm that are being referred, that are being referred to, to doctors and, and/or not being referred to doctors, but should be because of, because they, to be blunt, are out of school. I don't mean to suggest that, that to be out of, out of school and, and away from the physical classroom is the sole variable, but it is one. And I, and I think that any of the doc, many doctors that have been communicating with us in the last several months have, have affirmed that. So I share that to say that I really do hope that we, as a board, can acknowledge that, one, yes, we absolutely have to prioritize folks' wishes. And that includes for all of our teachers and staff and our, our families, the opportunity to stay home and to continue virtual. But then for those families and for those teachers that prefer an alternative that would, that would opt in, that would voluntarily say that they prefer to be, to go back for in-person learning, that we meet them where they're at and provide them at least the opportunity to do, to do so accordingly. And, and look, I began my remarks by acknowledging all the same concerns. I don't think it's realistic that on March the 15th, all of our schoolhouse doors will be open for, for business. I don't think that that would be prudent, and I don't think anybody's, well, at least this school board member is not prepared to propose that. I do, however, think that we could consider something as an alternative in a limited way. We, for example, have three new, three brand-new buildings that, that are about to go live. We still have a punch list of some unfinished business in, in some of those buildings. But we do have additional capacity in new facilities that include the most new HVAC capabilities to mitigate the COVID threat. So I'm sorry for the really long monologue, that wasn't my intent. But, but I do hope that we, as a board, will consider some kind of, some kind of opportunity for teachers, staff, and families to opt in in a voluntary way and, and, and not dismiss the real harm, the real, real harm that, that is, is being incurred. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Young. I think I saw Ms. Rizzi's hand, and I can go after her. Ms. Rizzi, go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I have a couple of brief questions and a comment. You know, we're talking about temperature scanners. It appears to me that with any of this, all of this, the presence of health professionals will be really extremely important, right? To take care of any issues that may arise and to give us guidance for how to respond to those. So, you know, I think it's really important that we have health professionals, nurses, people who have expertise in that area in place whenever we attempt this. Because I've been doing face-to-face, I did it last semester, we are all virtual this semester, but because I did face-to-face last semester at VCU, you know, I understand, first of all, the mask mandate is going to be tough for younger people. It's tough for college students. Like, literally, every day I was like, cover your nose, cover your nose! You know, like, cover your nose, your nose is a part of this, okay? And so I know that it's not going to be easy for our teachers to enforce that. Also, you know, I've talked to some parents in my, in my district who are like, my kids have asthma, there's no way I'm going to even, you know, risk this because, you know, I don't want my child to get sick and, and, you know, be really physically harmed, like in danger because of exposure at school. And I wonder about how social distancing in the classroom would work, even, you know, if we go back on masks, right? Like, you know, at VCU, we were half, like, you know, our classes, we may have 25 desks, we could only have 12 kids. So how will space issues be worked out in all of these situations? Because, I mean, literally, at VCU, we're half-capacity because we have to be. And when we're trying to deal with all of the kids at any point, how will space be worked out?
Are you done, Ms. Rizzi? All right.
Yes, I am, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Young, is my turn?
Madam Chair, it is your turn, but if, if you're prepared to defer again, Dr. Harris Mohammed has also requested opportunity.
Sure, I can go after Dr. Harris Mohammed. Thank you, Dr. Harris Mohammed. The floor is yours.
Madam Chair, are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have my list.
Okay. And, and the conversation of not being able to create a plan for summer learning, I want us to be wise about that discussion because if we look at our calendars, administration and school board colleagues, it is February the 9th. And even though creating a year-round calendar is bold, and let me publicly say I support year-round schooling, I do not support going fast to go slow. So what do I mean that, mean by that? We have to go slow to go fast. And year-round schooling requires intensive communication. Example, via surveys to our teachers, to our community, to our students. That has yet to be developed, but we have yet to review it, it has yet to be sent out. And I'm going somewhere with this because I want us to think about our summer learning. We cannot put that plan off because the board has yet to have a full discussion about year-round schooling. Again, it is February the 9th. Typically, if, if our calendar is done with the teachers and math, we would allow them to have some break in the students before summer, summer learning began. If we try to go fast to go slow with year-round school, that would, that's going to be limited, and I can't support that. I'm a teacher advocate all day. We have removed a workday from them between a semester. This was the first year that Richmond Public Schools, to my knowledge, was on a four-by-four schedule. They had ended the semester without a full-blown teacher-dedicated professional development. We cannot do that to them going into a year-round calendar. I would truly push back on that. So I'm asking the administration and the school board, my school board colleagues, to begin to look at a calendar. If, if we want to be bold about year-round schooling, then we have to go slow to go fast, not the other way around. And the plan, financial, how we're going to sustain it, how we're going to turn over the curriculum calendar, none of that has been presented to us. So until that is presented to us, we need to focus what's on, what we can change and have direct control over right now. That's the governor's communication, that's preparing for school as if we're having a regular calendar. When we send intent forms, and I'm saying "we" because we're a part of the "we", and teachers do not know what the calendar is going to look like, we are going to receive some intent forms that indicate they are not renewing their contract. Everything that we do, we must first keep the children in our forefront and the people who work with them. And none of us are in the classroom with those kids or virtually with those kids. So we have to go slow to go fast with the skits, year-round schooling. So again, I go back and ask, can we have a plan? Prepare for summer learning because we have yet to receive a plan for year-round schooling to include all of those attributes and factors that we need to make the decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harris Mohammed. I don't want to be a broken record and repeat, but I think all of the, many of you apologized for being long-winded. You weren't. I think every item you listed or concern you listed, they need, they all needed to be listed because this is a massive undertaking. I have a couple of concerns and comments. Number one, year-round school is something I've always dreamed of, but not for this coming school year. When I told them come back to school, as already stated, classroom spaces, I was thinking in my mind, kindergarten class, you may have 15 to 20 students. With this COVID situation in place, it would have to be fewer students. So where do the other students go? We, those are things of which we need to look to because the average classroom holds, let's say, 25 elementary-level children, students or so. But with this six feet apart, it's going to be different. So that takes planning, and I look forward to seeing those items listed on the, on our dashboard. And I look forward to seeing, in Superintendent Cameron's, your RPS direct information to keep our parents and community up to date on this. But I do not see, it's evident that we're not going back on March the 15th. Number one, with necessary equipment in place. Number two, most of our faculty and staff members have not been vaccinated. Number three, we have looked at the whole reorganization, which it will take, and that includes transportation, it includes meals, the whole nine yards. It's really like starting a school new, but we're talking about a whole system. So I do hope, as, as Dr. Harris Mohammed just, Mohammed just stated, take it slow. And it's not really slow, it's about meeting the needs of our people, our children where they are. Many will come back to us on level, many of them, majority of them probably will not. Probably it will not. So I'm, as we move forward in planning for next school year, with this topic being our school reopening plan, I do look forward to that dashboard when we meet. Well, we need to look at that as, as well, because I don't know how much time you all would need, Mr. Camres, between now and the 11th. But we do need to see something concrete. We do need, and there may be some teachers, as Ms. Dour stated, that may have to be moved around or brought into schools where there's additional settings. And I want us to also be mindful that, I was privy to some information this past weekend, we have so many of our children, not just Richmond City, but our surrounding counties as well, that are homeless, that are living in hotels. So let's say this particular school in the 7th district had 500 children. But because of having lost their homes or residences, they're now in South Side, they're now in the 8th district. So we don't know where all our children are. We know that they may be online for school, but they may be at someone else's home. But when it's time to go back, what's, what's in place with that? So in essence, we have a lot of work to do, a lot of work to do. Once we see what we're working with, that will help us to move forward. No, I don't know, I know we're not taking a vote tonight, we cannot open on March 15th. It's, it's not reasonable to even, and that list, the governor's, will give us a windfall of money. And that's something I wanted to ask with that, was he proposing, Mr. Camres, additional funds to open on March the 15th? Had that been discussed? Because we're going to need guest teachers, substitute teachers, health professionals, psychologists, classroom teachers, and this goes on and on and on and on and on. So are we going to receive some windfall of funds since we're still waiting on our stimulus check? Mr. Camres?
I'm not aware of any additional windfall. Again, I, I think this is less a matter of funds and, and really having those funds in hand and then being, and then actually doing the work of spending those funds. So again, even if all of the money showed up in our account tomorrow,
Right.
the work still takes, still takes some time.
And we're still looking at contractors for that, or we haven't started that process yet? In terms of, once we do whatever air quality or whatever, are we receiving bids now on that? Or we haven't started that process until we get the money? Or is the state suggesting particular companies? How is that going to work?
I, I would defer to Ms. Udasko and Mr. Hathaway on where we are in terms of being able to begin the process of identifying those contracts.
I see, Mr. Hathaway. Mr. Hathaway, would you like to speak to that? You're muted. You're muted, Mr. Hathaway, we can't hear you, you're muted. Okay, now, you're still muted. There you go, now you're on. Yes, thank you, thank you.
My apologies. We will have to rely on contractors, I mean, we just don't have the team for that. The biggest thing right now for us, air quality, mobile ionization, for us is critical, but the lead time on that is between four to six weeks on just the materials alone. So we're going to be leaning heavily on the contractors to help us with that.
So, Mr. Hathaway, you said four to six weeks to get the materials?
Yes, ma'am.
And then we, we have to hire someone to install? So we're talking about May? Before we even get to that part?
Well, we would, we would place the order, and then chances are, we would probably start installation starting in April, but it's going to be the month of April, May, and June to get it completed. I mean, we do have 46, 46 schools in the district, so it's a large task in front of us.
So we probably will not, looking at the schedule per se in terms of a summer program, from what I'm hearing now, we're talking maybe starting in August. That's just a suggestion because I do not want to put anybody's life in jeopardy. Any students, any administrative crew chief, teacher, any parent or grandparent or auntie or uncle that's bringing his or her child or children or siblings back and forth in, in harm's way. So this is an opportunity for us to take it step by step by step and leave no stones unturned because there's always one. And that one should be something that's very, very light. My other comment is, I'm concerned about the scanners that I've seen in, in the new builders in particular. And they are at the door, but you can really walk through and not even know it's a scanner. Remind me what you see in the airport because of the archway-like. So if there's no one there to tell you to go through the scanner, you can ring the front doorbell, someone will let you in, and you can just go straight through with or without going under the scanner. And I'm glad to hear that other doors would be utilized because I've only seen them at the front doors, but we have many people that come through the back doors or the side doors. So that's, that's especially if you're parking in the parking lot or on the side. And that's something to think about. Ms. Udesko, I saw your hand. Please, go right ahead.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So to address your point, our initial priority was installation. But to the point that Ms. Rizzi made earlier, healthcare professionals will be critical for the actual implementation of all of these mitigation strategies. So when we actually do bring students and staff back into buildings, a nurse, I'll just use that as an example, would be stationed there at the temperature checker to also be around lest there be a student with a temperature that we needed to discreetly take to the nursing suite to talk with them about other symptoms. Because you're absolutely right, as they look right now, they just look like archways. So without a human component, there might be missed opportunity. I do want to flag that, you know, we used our CARES money for the initial purchase. You don't see temperature checkers in the ESER that we'll go over tonight. We are going to recommend after the ESER approval, a transfer of other operating dollars to be able to consider that one-time dollars from other savings that we're, we're seeing this year. But they are about, they are a couple thousand dollars for each one. So we also are trying to be thoughtful about placement. But they do take up seventy temperatures per minute. And so that's what's so critical is the, how fast they go. As you think about a school like River City, for example, with fifteen hundred kids, well, they wouldn't all be coming in the same door, of course. We can't be using the handheld temperature tech checkers, which require a twenty-second reset between each temperature. So, yeah, but the points you've made are well-taken and will be an important part of our reopening strategy.
Thank you, Ms. Udesko. Ms. Young, do we have any other comments before we move to the next item?
We, we do. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Page, then Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Ms. Page, please proceed.
Yes, Madam Chair, um, this is a comment. Um, I want to applaud the governor for his bold request, but it's based on what we've heard tonight. Mr. Hathaway is an unrealistic request to reopen by March, March fifteenth safely. Um, but also I have listed in the chat for, for transparency, the items that should be added to the dashboard as well. So I wanted to make that point. But again, based on what we are hearing tonight and the processes that we have to go through, this is an unrealistic reopening plan. So thank you.
And before Dr. Harris Mohammed moves forward, thank you, Ms. Page, for stating that. Because I don't want anyone at home thinking that we're at, people are at school not doing anything. People have, the buildings have been sanitized, some buildings are in better shape than others. A lot has been going on to get prepared for this. But right now, we're talking about the big-ticket items that we really need. Which makes me think with those schools that are open, they already had air ionization? No, they didn't. So I wonder what they're using. Where's Mr. Hathaway? Is he still on? What they're using per se as their students continue, are windows open? We didn't talk about that again, which will be on the dashboard about site, things that we mentioned the last meeting that we had regarding opening windows and letting fresh air back and forth. And which also takes in place a security piece. So we have a lot to do, but I want people to know if you've been in the school or around the school, it's extremely quiet, it's too quiet. But the buildings, a lot has been done to clean up the buildings, basic things, but that, that are ongoing. However, right now, we're talking about those big-ticket items and to say, open March fifteenth. Thank you, Governor Northam, for being realistic in the safety of our children. I am in full agreement with those persons. And it seems like it's pretty much everyone, but I'm just saying, it looks like it's consensus. I know we're not voting, that we need to make sure we have everything in place before we move forward. So I, so I appreciate that, Mr. Cameras, on behalf of those persons who've been working hard. I've seen them inside and out, including the yards. I'm so pleased with some of the yards that I see. Trash has been picked up. We still could use a little bit more beautification along the way, which would be nice before the children come back to school, to be welcome with beautiful plants and, and, and just life and brightness, just to set that tone. But it's evident that lots has been done, but these are the big items. And then my concern also is, once we get these big items in place, the maintenance piece, that would be in the budget, I assume. Because every item that's listed, which are big-ticket items, would need to have ample, I guess, insurance or however that's done because things do happen. All right, Dr. Harris Mohammed, the floor is yours.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Hathaway spoke of working with companies outside of Richmond Public Schools, and I truly understand that our team is not extended to that, to that magnitude to provide that internal support. Will we know as a board what those contracts and costs are? Just in case we have to use our policy to go through a RFP?
If I may, Madam Chair?
Please, thank you.
Absolutely. Once we have clarity about how we're going to proceed, we can share all that information with the board, Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Thank you so much. Mr. Young, anyone else?
No, ma'am.
Excellent. Our timing is looking good. So, Mr. Cameras, not unless there's something else you want to state regarding the reopening discussion? We can move to two-point-oh-two. What's your pleasure?
I'm ready to move on if you are, Madam Chair.
Yes, indeed. Two-point-oh-two, discussion of new funding from the elementary and secondary school emergency release, relief, the ESER fund. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to share my screen to reorient us all on the presentation from January nineteenth, which laid out our budget priorities. One second as I make sure to have that set up appropriately. All right. So as we have discussed, this new batch of stimulus money is approximately fifty-four-point-six million dollars. This is one-time funding, meaning once it is spent, it is gone and there is no expectation that it will recur the following year. Given that we have approached the funding by, in essence, splitting it up into three chunks. The first chunk would be in our current fiscal year, FY twenty-one. We are proposing about sixteen-point-four million dollars of expenditures. And as you can see, the, the majority of that is for the facility enhancements that we have just been talking about. Also some money to assist with the childcare centers and instructional technology. The bulk of the stimulus, about twenty-four and a half million, we are proposing for this coming academic year, largely for academic and social and emotional supports in response to COVID nineteen, including eight million dollars for an extended-year calendar. And then we're proposing to reserve about thirteen-point-seven million for the following school year, that is the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year, to help us continue some of the most critical investments that we would make next year so that they all don't suddenly disappear as the funding dries up. This would also allow us to phase in funding from the city and the state to maintain the most critical investments into the future with recurring dollars. The next several slides go through these investments in detail. And I'm going to ask Ms. Udesko and others to, to speak to the specifics. One thing I do want to note and acknowledge is that there are a significant number of positions that are being proposed. They are a number of teaching positions, ESL, reading specialists, middle school positions, a number of others. And I want to acknowledge that there is some risk in using these funds for those positions as salary, of course, is a recurring expense. And typically speaking, we would not want to use one-time funds for those positions. We have tried to mitigate that, as I just shared, by reserving a good chunk of the money for the following school year so that we can maintain those positions while acknowledging we would need additional revenue from the state and the city to maintain them well into the future. I am cautiously optimistic that a year, two years from now, we will be in a better position and we will see increased funding from the state in particular that would enable us to do so. But I did want to acknowledge that as a risk as you consider this proposal. With that, I will turn it over to Ms. Udesko, who is going to begin, I believe, with the facilities investments. Just quick check, Ms. Udesko, would you like me to stay on this screen or bring up the detailed document that we submitted for this evening?
I think this screen is fine to stay as an overview, but just so the board knows, I'll be referencing the secondary document, which I believe is entitled "The ESER Grant Proposal." So thank you. Um, I am going to, just because there is a far more extensive presentation that I'm going to also walk you through, and it's why Bobby Hathaway is here with us this evening on bipolar ionization. I'm going to do that first line last so that we can kind of see everything in its totality and then take questions. So the first line, the installation of the air filtration system at six million dollars for immediate use is the bipolar ionization. So again, I'll come back to that at the end. The second line that you'll see for immediate use is two-point-five million dollars for any other HVAC or energy management system work that were originally on our fiscal year twenty-two CIP list. But because, again, we're talking about the timing of reopening, we did not feel it would be prudent to wait until July first, which is when CIP dollars become available. And so wanted to move these urgent HVAC and energy management system needs to this winter and spring to ensure that they were completed for a fall opening. And you'll see in the drill-down document, the detailed document, how that two-point-five million dollars breaks out and which schools were in the queue for HVAC repair this upcoming year. You'll see things like replacing rooftop units, fans, chillers, et cetera. The next item, and Ms. Burke mentioned this specifically, is an additional four-hundred-thousand dollars on top of our current maintenance budget to specifically use on HVAC. So this additional funding would allow us to change our HVAC filters at a more frequent interval and simply have additional funds on hand for needed maintenance. Obviously, we need to have increased maintenance funds available such that when the bipolar ionization units are installed in all of our systems, should there ever be any system issue, we can immediately address that and maintain air quality each day. The next item you'll see, and this goes a little bit to what Mr. Hathaway shared as well, is we are proposing the addition of one additional HVAC technician to the facilities team. We currently only have four HVAC technicians to service the entire division. And we just recognize with this being a significant priority, something we have to get right on a daily basis, adding additional capacity to this team is important. You'll see that we're proposing funding this position both years, twenty-two and fiscal year twenty-three, such that we would not need to invest local dollars until fiscal year twenty-four. Shifting away from HVAC to two hygiene proposals. The first is, just as we're continuing to think about touching things less, spreading less germs, we're proposing the installation of touchless soap and paper towel dispensers. That's something that we would want to do now with board approval as part of the bathroom blitz. So the touchless paper towel dispensers cost about a hundred each. The touchless soap dispensers are about sixty each. So in totaling this up across all of our bathrooms, we would need about three-hundred-thousand dollars to replace all of the current dispensers for this new touchless model. The next line item you'll see is also an immediate expenditure. While Mr. Cameras is accurate in saying that we have a lot of PPE on hand right now because we initially had been preparing for the possibility of reopening both in the fall and in the winter, and that was back when supply was very limited. These are things that we can just simply continue to stock up on and don't want to ever run the risk of our supply running low. So this would be additional masks, additional gloves, soap, because we know that we'll want our students and staff simply washing their hands more frequently, and hand sanitizer. Ms. White, you had asked previously about hand sanitizer stations. I'm pleased to report that every single classroom in the division, as well as every common area, has already had a hand sanitizer station mounted on the wall. They are all currently filled with hand sanitizer. So part of this money would be to rehab, purchase hand sanitizer refill so that custodians could ensure that those classroom-based units were always filled. The final two items relate to maintenance. So as you likely know, we used several million dollars of our CARES allocation this past fall to do deep cleanings in every single one of our buildings, helping restore them to a really good foundational level. But our custodians need additional supplies and equipment to maintain that level of cleanliness. Unfortunately, our custodial supplies are not all as modern as they should be. So part of this funding would be simply to have some of that more modern equipment to ensure that we can maintain those cleaning levels. The other part of these supplies and equipment, though, specifically relate to COVID. So we've been fortunate enough, under Bobby's leadership, to train all three of our managers to train all three of our managers of custodial services to be able to do the defogging and disinfecting after a positive case in a building. And so we want to be able to continue to buy that equipment, that defogging mist that kills the COVID virus, as well as potentially train crew chiefs or other individuals, if comfortable, to be able to do this type of work as well. So this will help modernize our 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 team's work. And then the final piece relates to adding custodians. So this is an area which has unfortunately been a gap in Richmond Public Schools for many years and unfortunately is part of the reason why our buildings have not been able to maintain the level of cleanliness that we all desire. Industry standard is one custodian for every twenty-five thousand square feet. And with this ratio, RPS is currently about twenty-seven custodians short. We propose in this budget adding ten new custodians in fiscal year 22. We recognize this still means that we would be seventeen custodian short of industry standard, but did feel it was important to consider this increase to our budget in an incremental way and definitely know that ten new custodians will make an impact. In order to increase that impact, we also are conducting custodial leveling, something that traditionally had not happened at the custodial level to ensure that we are aware of the appropriate staffing needed at each school and can even make some real-time movement right now in buildings which may have, for example, three custodians and perhaps two is a more appropriate allocation based on that one to twenty-five thousand industry best standard. Jason, if we could pop over to the bipolar ionization deck, I would like to walk through the the overview of this technology. But I also want to thank Bobby in advance for for being here to walk through this. I do not make any pretenses that I am a HVAC expert. So I share this more initially from a layman's perspective of how I've come to understand bipolar ionization and the value that it will add in terms of air quality. And then I'll let Bobby answer some of the more technical questions related to its installation. So bipolar ionization at its core is a process to help clean and disinfect the air. And that's important in preventing not only the spread of COVID-19, but actually can help clean the air in other ways by preventing the spread of other pathogens, mold, et cetera. So even the term bipolar ionization can be a little bit confusing. What does that mean? It makes you put on your science hat. So ionization is the process of using voltage to electrically charge air molecules. And bipolar ionization means you're doing that with both negatively charged as well as positively charged ions. So that's that's the BI, the two-type system. And the reason we're talking about bipolar ionization right now is because that has been shown to be more effective as we think about air quality than just having one type of ion. So for example, just positive ions or just negative ions. So what does it mean when something's been ionized? Well, basically, these electrically charged ions are going to travel through the airstream. And that airstream is what's in the HVAC system. So it's kind of coming through that air discharge system. These electrically charged ions, then because they're electrical or electrified, they then attach to the pathogens in the air, the viruses in the air. And when they do that, they introduce a chemical reaction on the virus's cell membrane surface. For COVID-19 specifically, this reaction of the electrically charged ion with the membrane deactivates the virus so that it no longer can spread or cause infection. As I shared previously, we also have the benefit of bipolar ionization. And this is a technology that's been around for for quite a while. So it's not something that was created just for COVID-19. Because bipolar ionization, this cleaning process, can help us more than just stopping the spread of of COVID-19. It attacks and kills other viruses, mold spores, bacteria. And in addition, I think that it can add value as we think about kids who may have asthma because during the cleaning process, what happens is these ions attach to airborne particles, so dust, dander, pollen. And when they stick to them, they get bigger. And then bigger particles get stopped then by our filters. So this allows the air filtration system to capture those things and actually makes your HVAC system work better. So that's another reason that we've paired this, of course, with those additional four hundred thousand dollars in HVAC maintenance because we want to make sure also that our filters are doing their part, too. So that's a lot of kind of complicated science. Let's just take a look at a picture about how this works that can kind of simplify it. So if you look here on the left-hand side, these little Xs are the viruses. These are polluted air, and they're entering the air duct. They're entering the HVAC system. Bipolar ionization, these little, you know, sticks-looking things right here, this is where they're electrically charging the ions. So you can see those pluses and minuses. That's the bipolar, the positive and the negative. And then you can see here the ionization is beginning. And they're starting to stick. Those two little pluses and minuses are starting to stick to the Xs. And again, the Xs are polluted air. And so forty-five minutes later in in this example, and I'll show you some research of of a couple of different lengths of time, you can see that it is significantly reduced. So the air has been cleaned. I do want to, of course, name right here, there is no system that eliminates risk. So that's why you'll see there are still two little air particles. Everything, there is no 100% mitigation strategy, but this is an important one. So let's talk a little bit about how it's installed and how it's maintained. So people might ask, well, will I be able to see it? How do you, how do you put this into your HVAC system? So you won't be able to see it. It's a small little unit that's placed inside the HVAC system. It comes before the filters because you, no, excuse me, it comes after the filters because you want the the ionization not to be filtered out, but you won't be able to to see it. The important thing, though, to know here is there are seven different kinds of HVAC systems in RPS. We shared those back on November 16th, when we first introduced this idea. And it works in all of them. So there's not one way it's going to be installed, but it works in a window unit, just like it's going to work in a rooftop unit. That same science. So once the unit is put into the HVAC system, it's not like a filter that needs to be replaced. In fact, this is why we are legally allowed to use CIP dollars for it if we want it. Now, we're not proposing that, but initially we had. Now we're proposing moving it to Esser for speed. But because the ionization unit can last up to fifteen years, this is something that we really will see extended, bang for our buck, if you will, air quality over time. Whereas some of the other air cleaning ideas that are out there, technologies that are out there, like UV, that can last about three years or simply increasing the quality of your filters. Obviously, you have to change filters very quickly. So there's some real cost efficiency with this system as well, given how long it it lasts. However, we do, again, want to stress that increased regular HVAC maintenance is going to be critical for this to work. Bipolar ionization only works if your HVAC works. So that's why the additional maintenance funds are in the budget, as well as we have about, we think the HVAC, the bipolar ionization will cost close to five million. And we actually are budgeting six million here, as we discussed back in in November, in order to cover up to one million dollars in possible HVAC needs that are identified as the units are placed. You probably saw on that little chart that it said after forty-five minutes. So yes, people will see that research says the system needs to be running for a while to be effective. It takes just a minute for those ions to be electrified and them to run over the air system. So we would need to run our HVAC systems more regularly to ensure that the air is always being clean. This isn't a challenge. It's just a shift, especially in rooms with window units. So when the custodian comes in the first one of the day at 6:00 AM, we're going to turn on the HVAC to make sure that it's running. It's just new protocols we would need to put in place. And we do want to flag that this will increase our energy costs slightly because we will be running units more frequently. And then again, finally, how much does this cost? About five million to install the units, probably somewhere between half a million and one million to make HVAC repairs along the way. And again, that's why we've proposed the full six million here in the Esser, just to give ourselves a little cushion. This is, of course, in addition to the two point five million for the HVAC repairs and replacement. One thing I do want to address is safety. So there were some concerns when we first introduced this idea about bipolar ionization producing ozone. And so I want to be clear that, again, this technology has been around for for decades. Original, earlier versions of this did produce ozone, and that can be harmful. But the technology has evolved. What we are recommending meets a very strict standard. And so that that standard is is listed there. And then finally, I won't go over it with you. But the next two slides just show a bunch of places where bipolar ionization is being used, including the the White House, Google. This isn't just something that's used in in systems that aren't working well. This is just good air quality, good air cleaning that can be used in in all settings. And then for those who want to dig a little bit deeper into some of the research and articles, the final slide provides some details there with more information about the technology, as well as some of the research around it. So I I know that was a lot. Thank you for that. It is important, as Mr. Camaras shared, for us to make a decision on this quickly because Bobby mentioned the timeline for this. So I wanted to be sure that you had as many details as possible tonight in hopes that we can make a decision no later than early next week to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hudasko. That was quite a chemistry lesson, so I'm told.
Yes, it was.
And thank you so very much. I learned a lot, I'm sure maybe others did too, but thank you for sharing that. Mr., yeah, we have questions?
We we do, yeah. I am first Ms. Dorr, then Dr. Harris-Mohammed.
And I'd like to ask that Bobby be able to answer any technical questions that that come up moving forward. I may have exhausted my my knowledge base.
Well, you did well, and I know Mr. Hathaway will continue. Thank you so much. Ms. Dorr, the floor is yours.
We can certainly see your your old teacher vibes coming through. I have, thank you for addressing my earlier questions related to ozone and some of the scientific research. I appreciate the extra work that's gone into this. I do think it's important that we really vet this because it's a pretty big line item in our budget. And so I have a couple of follow-up questions. One, two, related to the sort of science and or process, and then one just related to who we're working with on this. So first question is on specifically around window units. I guess I'm wondering what happens in the winter with heat. So if you require the window units to be running, do you have to run the AC and heat at the same time? My second question is, how did we, how do we come to decide on this technology? Was it reviewed by an independent engineer? Was this something that we were familiar with? Would just like to understand the process. And then my third question is just related to if we are working with SWAM vendors, so small women and minority-owned business vendors to assist with the installation of our of this, if we choose to go forward with it, and other other facility updates. Would just like a brief update on that.
Bobby, do you want to start with the window units in the winter piece?
Yes, ma'am. So thank you, Mr. Dorr, for the question. As far as the window units in the wintertime, we would actually just switch the system to fan. And the fan on the unit itself would just be moving air throughout the room. Buildings like, if you take Benford, or if you take Fox, or if you take another school, one of the units, Richmond Alternative School, those two schools have windows units in them, but the main heating system in the building is centralized. So we would use the main heating system to move the air for heat and then just be recirculating air within the classroom to be able to distribute the ionization in the class.
Okay. Ms. Dorr, did I answer your question?
Yes, and then just my other two regarding SWAM and the process.
As far as the procurement goes, we're working with procurement. There's a cooperative agreement out there that's been approved through RPS that we'd be working with the vendor there. And they'll be providing quotes on the project. And I think you had one other question about how we came up with this technology. And we did work with the city during the JCT meetings because they did come up the question in the new schools, what we're going to do to try to increase the air efficiency in the new buildings. And multiple items were discussed. And then I think it was a consensus between RPS and the city that the ionization would probably be the best direction to go based on what the A and E firm with the city decided, RMM. Not to mention the contractors that I've been working with through procurement have done some testing throughout a couple of their buildings, Benford being one of them. They put a unit in operation there and a window unit to verify that everything was working there. And we did the same thing at OBR.
Okay, you good, Ms. Dorr?
You could just briefly comment on the use of SWAM vendors to help with this installation.
Right, Mr. Hathaway?
We can see who's out there. I mean, right now, I haven't dug too deep into that, but we can see who's available out there and try to utilize that as much as possible.
Thank you, thank you very much. Dr. Harris-Mohammed?
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of questions. Will all schools receive the system that Ms. Hudasko has just described to us? And can we afford the system in every school? And how so? That's one question. The second question is, I want to go back to the square footage and the buildings. If I'm almost certain, not 100%, but I'm like 97% certain that pre-COVID, it was one to twenty-five thousand square feet. We're post-COVID. So that regulation changed a little bit to one to twenty thousand, to one to twenty-two thousand square feet. If the need is custodians, which I'm hearing in this presentation, and if we are truly being equitable for children and staff due to the emotional roller coaster that COVID-19 placed upon many of our lives and our families, why are we not prioritizing the seventeen additional positions? So I want us to think about it like this. If we are truly applying equity across the division, then we need to be intentional. Then we need to be intentional about looking at central office positions that overlap. Which many of them do, and, and their managerial positions. And place the custodial, the custodians that we need, so desperately need. According to the data, she just provided the data, which I'm questioning a little bit of the square footage. But we need to be intentional about ensuring that the custodians, for goodness sake. Because of COVID is where they need to be. So I, I'm not understanding how we're not going to prioritize seventeen additional custodians. Which should not be a question due to COVID, because we're talking about equity. We're talking about the causes that COVID-19 has placed upon us. So then we need to prioritize and place custodians where they need to be. So if that can be addressed, starting with, will all schools receive the system? And then how, how we will pay for that? And then so forth.
So the first.
I wanted to finish, Ms. Haddasco.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I thought you were just repeating.
And, and then go for it, thank you.
Yes, so the, the information we've shared is for every school. And the seven different types of HVAC systems, this works in all of them. And the six million dollar price point is for all schools, every classroom. So that piece, we believe that this is something we can afford. Especially with these one-time dollars, this is a one-time expense. It's a fifteen-year lifespan, and we strongly recommend moving forward with an air quality. Process. To the second piece. We, we use the industry standard. I apologize if I've missed the, any update. But even if we went to a lower ratio, we would obviously need more. And we don't disagree that the division has, has many needs. If the board wishes to prioritize twenty-seven custodians. On the, on the one-time dollars instead of ten. We're happy to explore places to cut from the Esser. And would welcome the board's guidance on, on direction. To move forward. We hope however, to meet this standard through incremental increases this year and moving forward. We did propose ten new custodians last year as well. And due to competing priorities, none of them were approved in the final budget. So we are trying again this year. And certainly agree with your sense of urgency and hope we can move forward this year.
Thank you, Ms. Haddasco. Mr. Young, who's next?
Madam Chair, next up, Ms. White, Paige.
All right, floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Hathaway, I have several questions. Quite, I have about four or five for you. Have you considered, I know that the layouts of schools are very much different in different schools. And I have a school that has like two schools together. And I know that the HVAC is at the end of the school, which is the auditorium. How would that system filter out into the schools? Or do you want me to continue to ask my questions? Just keep going?
Whatever you prefer, you let me know how you want to handle it.
Okay. Okay, and my other question, I'm gonna keep on going with this because I'm on this, I'm on the bipolar right now. What amount of air is this unit, can it process? I mean, how, how much can air conditioning unit process? Per unit of time with these bipolars? My other question is, you were saying that the ventilation. We know that ventilation will be provided by ventilation from the bipolars. Open windows preferably, but some of the windows do not open. Would there be any portable air purifiers to go with that? And my other question on the bipolar, are these the needlepoint? Bipolars that help the allergies, mold, mildew? Does it have that little blue needlepoint on these to remove the small airborne? And my other question is. You said that it would be on the main heating, it would go with the direct with the main heating. What about the schools that have the wall heaters, like the radiator heaters? How would that, because at a certain time of the year, the school's heat doesn't turn off. It's controlled by central. So you still have heat while you're trying to put the bipolar in, so that's, that's the warmth. How would that interact? Because schools, teachers, they just can't go in there and cut off their air and cut off their heat anytime they want. And by having different schools layout, three different schools. And you may have it on the roof up all the way up to the, up to the front. You have another additional school to the rear of the building. How would that filter into the schools unless you put two multiple units on there? I think that's all my questions. If you can, I mean, if you want to ask me and you forget, I might just ask back to you.
I'm going to try to remember and I'll try to start from the beginning. So I think the first school you were referring to would be Carvey Elementary School.
Yes.
In Carvey Elementary, each classroom would receive one of these units specific for that classroom. So that's how we would treat that particular area. So every individual classroom there will have its own unit installed to treat that particular class. So that's how we would treat that, it wouldn't necessarily be leaving the auditorium. And traveling through the rest of the building. Because the unit in the auditorium only takes care of the unit in the auditorium, and that will be treated as well. So hopefully that answers your question there. And then I think, let's see here. The units itself, each unit is designed for a certain amount of CFM, which is cubic feet of airflow. Because all air conditioning systems, they're rated on airflow. Each, each unit is specific for a certain amount of airflow in the classroom. So they will be installed based on the CFMs per class. Or if it's on a rooftop unit, the size of the unit will be increased to handle that amount of air that that unit delivers to that building. I'm trying to think, so what other buildings in your district are you, is in your district? I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know off the top of my head.
Well, I was just, I was kind of indicating to that building, but you did say Fox, then alternative. But I was thinking of buildings in general. And I was just asking about the ventilation and the portable purifiers. Air purifiers, and of course the windows, some of the windows not opening. And the heat that I was asking, you cannot turn on and turn off at particular times. And I actually did the bipolar have that blue point needle. I guess you call it the needlepoint, that it goes specific. And then I asked you about the main heat, about the schools that have the wall heaters. And they radar, I mean, the radiator heaters. But I guess that fits into the, when you can't cut it off and when you can't cut it off because it's down in central. That's what I wanted to ask.
So, so the units are the needlepoint bipolar ionization, it is that, that style. And then as far as purification units go, we're hoping that this would eliminate the need for that. And this would basically be more sufficient than that, that particular item there. As far as the building operation goes, most of their buildings on a building automation system. And controlled from a centralized computer at our facility services office. What we're planning to do is adjust the operation, schedule time. Instead of like coming on at five o'clock in the morning, we're going to probably bring it on at four o'clock in the morning. To have it operate sooner before everyone enters the building. So in, in the case that Michelle touched on earlier. The window units, unfortunately, now all the window units are on the building automation system. So in some cases, we may have to have the custodians put those units in the wintertime in the fan position. So the unit will be operating other classrooms. So that they can have the bipolar ionization operating at that time.
I just have one question for Ms. Haddasco. I want to, on that twenty-seven custodians. I would prefer that we allocate for those twenty-seven custodians based on the units that we have to. They have to turn on, just like he said, five o'clock in the morning and so much other things. That has to be done in the school early in the morning before the students and the teachers comes. So I don't think that we should limit any of our custodians. Even three or four now has a job. So I think that we need every custodian that we need, whether it's in the cleaning the bathrooms after the students. Cafeteria, we need every custodian that we're going to need for this. Thank you, Mr. Hathaway.
Thank you, Ms. White. Ms. Page, you're up next.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just want to say thank you, Mr. Hathaway and Ms. Haddasco for this important and critical information. Because this bipolar ionization. I mean, this, this is talking about the health and safety of our staff and our students. And I think discussion, this discussion is well worth our time. So I want to thank you for that. But my question is going back to the next page, so you may want to wait. If somebody else, other board members have questions about the bipolar ionization. Because my question is going back to the budget, well, this is the budget, but in regards to the learning centers. So Madam Chair, if you want to defer that question, I will be willing to, to do that. Just so we can keep in line with the same questions.
What's your pleasure? You good, Ms. Page?
I mean, I can defer and wait until we.
Go right ahead, because my time, we have about less than eight minutes left. So I'm, if everybody else, was there anyone else, Mr. Young?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I asked my question. So my question regarding the learning centers. So have we allocated in the budget? So you're referring to the learning centers that was created last year? That was supported by the city funding superintendent cameras?
Yes, Ms. Page, that is in reference to the facilitated learning centers that the city established. Some of which in partnership with RPS.
So my question then is. If this was the city-supported initiative. Is the city prepared to provide us additional funding? With this budget? Because as we all here tonight, we all recognize that we have so, so many needs to address. So would that mean that the city will give us additional funding to support this initiative in our budget? Because if so, then we could reallocate. Funding for other needs that need to be addressed. So that may be something that you cannot answer now, but I would like for it to be addressed. If not tonight, but at the next budget work session, when you've had an opportunity. To have a discussion with the city, the superintendent and Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page, point well taken, you have not because you asked not. So it doesn't hurt to ask, does it? I don't know where it's going to come from though, but you never know, you never ever know. Are there any other questions, Mr. Young, regarding the reports that have been given tonight?
Yes, ma'am, first Ms. Gibson, then yours truly.
Ms. Who, say Rizzi?
It's first Ms. Gibson, then Ms. Rizzi, and then yours truly.
All right, Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Floor is yours.
I appreciate that. So I think we need more time to work on this budget. So first, I want to express or really emphasize my concern. That we're having a budget discussion. And we are talking about adopting a budget that includes some risk. At a time when families are really yearning for stability. You know, we have a fiduciary responsibility to make fiscal decisions that will. You know, that will provide for our students year after year. And as much as I can appreciate the, the requests that are made for, for using these one-time funds. For, for ongoing needs, it just doesn't, it doesn't feel right. To be frank, if I was a custodian, would I want to accept a job if, if I didn't know that the district didn't have money for it? You know, after a couple of years. We are, you know, are putting ourselves in a position where after two years. We're in a, we're forced to either, you know, to make cuts. To make cuts, and there are real implications when that happens. Both to our students and to the staff members that are, that are there. So, so I, I, I have serious concerns about going down this path. At a time in our country where our economic stability is, is up in the air. You know, so if tax revenues go down, we won't be in a position where we can necessarily add to our budget moving forward. There's a chance that we will have to make cuts regardless. And so, so this just does not feel, this does not feel right. And so I have, I asked my colleagues to, to pause and consider, consider the impact of that. I am also concerned that, you know, you know, we've known for some time that we needed more custodians in, in, in the district. I know that this is an area where we saw hits after the recession in two thousand and eight. But you know, to hear now that we are short twenty-seven custodians is, it's too, it's, it's, it's been a long time. And we were talking about a bathroom blitz. When we were talking about the bathroom blitz, that was the time to say, hey, we have a shortage in staff. You know, we don't want the community to think that we're just, we just didn't have enough volunteers. You know, the reason why we have cleanliness and maintenance issues in our buildings is because we are short of staff. And our current custodians deserve to have the public know that. You know, because, because the, the public goes in and they go, oh, look at these, these, these schools are, they're, they're filthy, right? And then that's a reflection of the custodians. But it's not a fair reflection if the truth is, there are just not enough people in those jobs to get the job done. And so when we have a deficiency like that, a gap like that, it's our responsibility, both to the public and to the staff, to let the public know. I want to highlight the fact in looking at the budget, there are, there's quite a lot of money that's going to outside agencies. You know, both through the childcare programs. And then in some of the social emotional supports. And we all agree that, you know, we need more social emotional supports. But, but you know, how those outside agencies are using those funds is kind of out of our control. And I feel, I, you know, I, I, I'm uncertain about, you know, handing over what is at least five million dollars in funding. To two other organizations outside of the district. That is a lot of money. I think as we are thinking about the childcare program and supporting that childcare program. That was introduced by, by the city that was the city's and now is kind of ours. You know, we, we need to know more information about this program. How many students are at each location? Have there been any health concerns? Have there been any cases of COVID? We, we do a great job announcing, you know, what the updates are in, in our school buildings. But if this program, if these childcare facilities are now an extension of our schools, the public deserves to have updates on those as well. And so I want to know how many students are there? And so I want to know how many students are there and, and have there been any health issues in any of those spaces? We, I appreciate that there has been some additional information provided for some of the line items, but there's still, there's still a lot of, you know, a lot of unknowns. And I want to be frank here, we have adopted budgets where we've funded initiatives and not put enough money to what they actually end up costing, right? I mean, we funded preschool transportation, one point five billion, five million dollars less than it actually ended up needing to cost, right? We, we funded a number of, of positions as part of the strategic plan. And then find out that we were under budgeted those by nearly half a million dollars, right? And so I don't want to be in a position again where we're underfunding jobs. And so, and so I, I want to make sure that we are getting that additional detail. So I request for each of the positions that we've outlined in this budget. Regardless of, you know, whether they're in the recurring funds or, or, or in those one-time funds that, that each position is allocated to, to include the exact FTE count. That we note the exact title that these positions are going to be. I mean, we should be getting job descriptions for all of these positions as well as noting what the pay grade is. I think that's important information to have. I saw one line item that was specific to redesigning the alternative education program. And I, I believe that was like maybe two hundred thousand dollars. So is the two hundred thousand dollars for just coming up with the idea or is the two hundred thousand dollars for the actual program? And again, I'd, I'd like to understand more detail on, on, on how those dollars are going to be spent. Likewise, there's a five hundred thousand dollar line item for SOL testing. And it sounds like that's something that we have to do. And I, and I want to be clear in, in, in how those funds are used. And I also want to provide the public with an update on SOL testing. I think this is critically important. We should consider that at one of our upcoming meetings. I have heard about significant delays, you know, and, and some execution issues. And so I'd like to have a better understanding myself on, on how that rollout is happening. And, and how that is coming together for, for students that are having to take those tests. And then.
Ms. Gibson, Ms. Gibson, would you be so kind? Thank you so, I'm gonna come back to you. But it's almost eight o'clock and some board members stated that they have to leave. So I'm, I'm coming back to you, but you've done three minutes. So can we have Ms. Rizzi, Mr. Young, they will come back to you before we adjourn. And for those of you that have to leave, I think we still have a forum. Thank you so very much. I'm coming back to you, Ms. Gibson. And Ms. Rizzi, would you proceed? Thank you.
Well, now I feel like I'm in an awkward position here. Ms. Gibson, are you okay with this? I don't, I mean, I, you put me in this.
I know it's eight o'clock. We said six to eight. Now time is going to run out in a minute as well. We don't be caught, cut off and nobody gets to hear your comments. So we can come back to Ms. Gibson, we're still. Would you like to use the time or should I go to Mr. Young?
I have a couple of questions just directed at the, you know, back to the, the ionization. Bipolar ionization and, and they're quick, okay? One question I have is if, oh, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Ms. Gibson, and we'll, we'll work this out. One question is, was there an RFP required for procurement of the, the, you know, the, the equipment that was necessary for this, the labor, engineers, et cetera? I mean, I don't know if the RFP, you know, if there was a requirement that you put out, you know, request for proposals on those. But that is a question I have because it does seem to be a big dollar item.
If you don't mind, I'll just really quickly respond. We have not yet done the work. We're waiting for the board's approval. And then as Bobby mentioned, there is a co-op that we can kind of ride the coattails on. Although certainly we could explore other things. But I want to be very clear, we have not done this work. We are waiting for the board's approval.
Right, okay. Ms. Hadasco, you mentioned that this is not a hundred percent. I do appreciate the presentation. Like, I love looking at like negative positive ions and particles that stuff really interests me. But you said it's not a hundred percent. Do you know what the industry accepted averages say? In terms of how many particles get eliminated?
I don't. Bobby, is that something you know or should we loop back?
I think it'd be better to loop back.
Loop back on that.
Okay. Does bipolar ionization eliminate the need for classroom social distancing and masks?
No, I still recommend that as well.
Okay.
Still recommend that. It's just, it's just part of the CDC safety protocol.
Okay, so they, we will still require that? Yes or no? I, I want to know.
I do want to, if, if I may, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I, I think that depends on the level of vaccination. And if we have mask use, I think if all of those things are in place, we may not need as much of the social distancing come the fall. So that's something that we want to monitor because obviously if we're able to not require as much of the social distancing, it enables us to bring many more, if not all of our kids back.
Right, that was my concern, you know, whether our classroom rooms would be utilized at capacity if social distancing, you know, was still something we needed to do. All right, thank you.
Mr. Young, and I don't know how much time we have left, so I, I just text, so I don't want to cut anybody off. But Mr. Young, you're on.
Yes, Ma'am Chair. I'll gladly defer some of the time to, to Ms. Gibson to go now. But I do have, I will just make three quick points subsequent her, adjourning her comments.
Go ahead. So what are you asking? You want her to speak before you speak?
Correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Yeah, that, I, I'm, I'm, I'm finished with my comments. I will just say that that I expressed in the chat that I felt that the bionic ionization conversation went long. For the very reason that was, that, that we're now discussing. And so to be cut off in that fashion, I, I'll just say that I teach my children not to interrupt. And, and I, and I hope that we, we hold each other to that same respect.
And Ms. 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 Gibson, one moment please before you continue on, on the robust rules of order. And we'll discuss this during our governance. We want to make sure everybody has a chance to speak. Mrs. Jones hasn't asked anything tonight at all. There's more I want to say as well. So at some point, and we're getting ready to run out of time, I'm going to be kind enough. And I like what you teach your children. Good for your children, but I'm not your child. But I am going to be respectful. I am going to be respectful. It's my responsibility to make sure. I want to talk more, but I'm deferring my time to others. So if there's anything else regarding this report we've given tonight, we so gladly hear it. And so far as it being long, I thought the information was excellent. That's why we're having another meeting on Thursday night, another meeting on Tuesday night. So, Mr. Young, would you like to continue if Ms. Gibson is done? Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. Just three quick points in the interest of time. One, I just, I want to convey my gratitude to facilities, to Mr. Bobby, team, to Michelle Hadasco. I'm really excited about bipolar ionization, but I really want for any persons that are watching this evening to know that, that facilities has, has been busting their, their bottoms for, for quite a while. For the entire duration of the COVID out of school. They have been working on replacing HVAC and boilers and roofs and windows and, and doing all the work that Michelle spoke to. So I, I recognize that we aren't in the school building, so people per se don't see that now. But it is going on and I think that that should be acknowledged. The second point real fast is on, again, on topic of bipolar ionization. Seemingly, we've been discussing this for, forever. I know, I know that's hyperbole, but I, I, I do hope that we can as a group, notwithstanding any of the very good questions this evening, next week authorize RPS to proceed with the purchase of bipolar ionization, whether that's a, whether that's a cooperative agreement. And frankly, the cooperative agreement for folks who don't know just allows us to expedite things. That would be, that would be my preference. I think it's important that we do this for all the reasons that we've already spoken to. And then third, I just wanted to share on the topic of custodians. I, I heard a recommendation from Dr. Harris Mohammed a moment ago. It's a recommendation that I don't think I'll surprise anybody when I share I can support specifically as it relates to central office and identifying offsets in, in central office in favor of more custodians. So that, that's it, Madam, Madam Chair. But I do need to note that Dr. Harris Mohammed did request an opportunity to speak and then the superintendent to close us out.
I think we have three minutes. We hadn't heard from Mrs. Jones at all. Though, Ms. Jones, would you like to add?
And I was gonna ask, Madam Chair, if she wanted to speak, please absolutely let her.
Excuse me, Ms. Jones, did you want to speak?
I'm fine.
All right. Thank you so much for your patience and your level of professionalism. Dr. Harris Mohammed, you have another comment?
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to be very clear that I am not asking my school board colleagues to look at this Ursa additional funds for allocating for the seventeen additional positions. We need to look elsewhere, preferably starting in central office. The second thing, I also want to urge my school board colleagues that, Mr. Young, I heard you and I appreciate that. You may have heard this presentation numerous times, but I have not. So it's, it's very important for me to ask the important questions and ensuring that we're going through the process and applying the policies of the RFP. I want to encourage us to, to make sure we have a RFP not going on the coattails of another company. Let's go through the process of having a RFP. And last thing, my goodness. That was it. I'm sorry, I was trying to go.
Thank you, no problem. And don't forget board docs. I hope everything is, is in place. If not, we'll make sure we will. Mr. Cameras, sorry to cut you off, but you have two minutes. Thank you so very much. And thank everyone for their patience and giving everyone an opportunity to, to share and contribute to tonight's discussion. This is a big decision. I'll save my comments for Thursday. Mr. Cameras, the floor is yours.
Given the time, I just want to say thank you. Those were very helpful pieces of feedback and questions. And look forward to continuing the conversation on Thursday. Thank you, Madam Chair.
If there's no other business to be addressed and announcements of the business, Ms. Hadasco?
No, I was saying bye.
Okay. Good night all. Be blessed. Go in peace. Thank you. Thank you all.